Are you ready for the last one?
Last one, number eight, Webster Woods Car Wash Use Variants.
Located at eight zero one Ridge Road. Look at Webster Woods LLC is requesting a use variance to allow for the construction of a car wash business within the Webster Woods Plaza. I have one state two four acre parcel having SPL number zero seven nine point one seven dash one dash eight five located in an NC medium intensity commercial district under section two two five there's seventeen of the code of the town board.
Please use the microphone and state your name and tell us a little bit about your project. I'm hanging this up for you to hear. Oh, excuse me. Want you to put those up on the board then step up to the microphone because yeah, we have to, we have to hear.
When was this applicant in before for this, for this use variance? Do you remember the date?
I don't remember the date. I did review, I did review different, some different minutes that Catherine had sent us both from the zoning board and the, and the planning board. Maybe the applicant can refresh our memory.
They went all the way back to twenty eighteen.
I submitted the application in October of two thousand eighteen. I believe it was heard initially in January two thousand eighteen if my refer, my recollection is correct. Again, just to start off, my name is Chris Nadler, general counsel for Mark IV. I ordinarily show up with an engineer or two or even three to hang my drawings, but obviously I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you all for doing this. I'm glad that the town is able to get applications back in gear and I think it's, you're volunteering to do it is, is very beneficial for the community. So, thank you. In March two thousand eighteen, this board, this, the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals, granted a use variance for the Royal Car Wash at eleven forty-five Ridge Road. Prior to that, Mark IV had been talking to the town board about, or excuse me, subsequent to that, Mark IV had been talking to the town board of the town of Webster about rezoning our parcel at eight one Ridge Road. When we appeared at the town board finally, the town board said, why don't you just do what the Royal Car Wash guys did? Get a use variance. So, I showed up at the town clerk's office the next day, copied their use variance application.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could, everybody check and see if they have their phones on mute please because we're getting quite a bit of static here. Okay, I'm sorry.
I copied their use variance application. I told Betsy Brug, the attorney from Woods over who prepared it, I said, I'm plagiarizing this. We've got the exact same situation. I'm going to submit the same use variance application you did. She said, makes sense to me, go ahead, have at it. So, that's what I submitted in October two thousand eighteen to this board. When I came, I believe it was in January two thousand nineteen, it seemed like this board was, understood the need for a use variance application, was in favor of granting it, but said, get your site plan together first. Thereafter, we spent about a year at the planning board hammering out the details of this site plan. We significantly reduced the size of the car wash, the proposed car wash at Webster Woods Plaza. We took out a wash lane, we took out a laser wash bay, we turned the building so that the individual bays are facing on the south. We did a traffic impact study that showed that at most three to four cars at peak hours would be added as a result of this. Primarily, what this is going to do is get cars already going down Ridge Road to turn in on their way to Webster Woods Plaza or on their way to Five Mile Road.
Okay, now, excuse me one second. The applicant's holding up a rendering of aerial view of the, of the proposed car wash. Unfortunately, the people at home can't see this, but.
You have a camera?
But, yeah, well, let's, yeah, let's do that. I don't know if they could, I don't know if the resolution's going to be good enough, but let's, let's make that exhibit A in this application, okay?
Exhibit A is the site plan prepared by BME after extensive discussions with the planning board. When we met with essentially a PRC, Mr. Benway, Mr. Cassiani, and a few other members of the planning board, a few months ago, they said, all right, get the use variance and come back to the planning board and we think we can get you a site plan approval. So, what we're here for is a use variance.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt you real quick here?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, the aerial view is exhibit B like Baker on the submission that the applicant made to the zoning board. Is that right, Mr. Nadler?
That's changed significantly. I made that submission. Exhibit B that we submitted is from October two thousand eighteen. After a year of working with the planning board, it's a lot smaller, it's oriented differently, it sits back from the road a little bit more, so it's not the one that you're looking at.
Okay, so, so that we're clear, this aerial view that you're referencing is currently not in front of any of the sitting board members. They're offsite this evening. Is that accurate?
Yes. I wouldn't know. It's the man who's indicating.
Well, I'm, I can't see that drawing. So, so, Mr. Chairman, if you, let's just make sure as we go along, it'll make the record more clean, how many of the board members are unable to view that because we're not on a webex, we're on voice line only, so let's just make sure we're clear on that.
Understood, yeah. There's only two board members here in the boardroom and three board members teleconferencing. So, there's three board members that can't see this drawing and even if we hold it up to the cam, even if we held it up to the camera, I don't think the resolution would be good, good enough for them to see any detail.
Okay. And you referred to it now as a drawing. Is it an aerial photo or is it a drawing?
It's a.
It's a render.
It's an auto swimmer, I would say. No, this is, this is a site plan superimposed on an aerial view.
Okay.
This is an actual site plan prepared by an engineer. I just, it's yellow and green and looks like a drawing, but this is an actual site plan superimposed over an aerial view.
And just for the record, the board members do have a copy of the site plan in their packet? It's just not the colored rendering that is being displayed here in the boardroom.
But it's the same one.
It's essentially the same.
That was my question. We have a drawing number thirteen, this is Corinne, of project number two five five two A. Is that showing the same thing that is on the drawing number thirteen?
That is correct.
It appears, yeah, appears like that to me as well, yes.
Okay, we just don't have the pretty colors.
Ours is in color.
It's green and yellow. I wouldn't call them pretty.
Now they know what you're talking about.
Yes, thank you very much for straightening that out.
Good point, yeah.
Another change that, that we made through the planning board process is that after going through the car wash, vehicles can be funneled behind the Webster Woods Plaza building over to Five Mile. I think this will greatly reduce any traffic problems. And we've worked that out with the planning board. That's what the planning board wanted to see and that's what we've, we've, we've shown on our site plan.
Are they exiting out that way or entering out behind the plaza?
They, they can exit that way. It's not an entrance.
Okay.
But it's behind the plaza.
Correct.
Okay.
They can exit out of point. This is the exit. They can either come this way back up to Ridge Road or this way behind the plaza. In terms of use variance standards, first of all, there's precedent for this board granting a use variance for this very type of project in the same situation, in the same zoning district, in the same year that we applied for this. In terms of reasonable rate of return for any of the permitted uses, I submitted in the initial package an affidavit from our director of commercial real estate, Susan Woods. She's a commercial real estate broker with nineteen years of experience in the industry. She's extensively marketed the property, the pad site that is Webster Woods Plaza Four at eight oh one Ridge Road. And her affidavit shows that nobody wants it. No, there just isn't a market for it at this point. I've submitted an affidavit and financial records from Jim Richards, our chief accountant. He has well over forty years of experience in the, in accounting and the real estate development industry and he's attached to his affidavit, the financial records that show that over two hundred thousand dollars were invested into this property and well under that, we can't make any return on that property after having invested all that money. And the financial records are attached to that affidavit and that's competent evidence that this board can consider. The alleged hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. This is a pad site that is right on Ridge Road, that is attached to a plaza, that has, that, that is not desired by the marketplace. To my knowledge, there aren't similarly situated pad sites of this size and shape. It is not a common situation in the medium intensive, medium commercial district. This is the only one. There was one before that similarly situated and that's at eleven forty-five Ridge Road and that's now the Royal Car Wash. The requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This is going to be designed to blend in with the plaza, same materials, same color, same design. The cars and any other outdoor activity will be on the south side away from Ridge Road. As I told you, vehicle traffic can be directed behind the plaza building, the main plaza building. The character of the car wash is obviously, you drive down Ridge Road, you know, is appropriate for Ridge Road. Webster Federal Credit Union and Tim Hortons are right there in the plaza. They both have drive-through operations at their facilities. So, this is in character with the neighborhood. And finally, the alleged hardship is not self-created. We don't control market conditions. The Mark IV bought this property in two thousand four. It was going to be a great place to put a pad site. We built the plaza buildings first, invested all the money to do the whole site and by then the market, the current market conditions, not favorable to this. So, just like the Royal Car Wash, we're asking for a use variance, I think we've submitted competent evidence so that this board can follow its own precedent and grant a use variance. I'd love to answer any questions that you have.
I, um. You want to go in?
He wants to know what order you want to go in.
Do you know what I said?
Okay, Robert?
Going all the way back to the beginning, this was not the exact same situation as, as where we asked a lot of pointed, specific questions. One of the, one of the criteria for granting a use variance, if I'm not mistaken, is proving hardship. And at the time, we asked the question about whether or not that plaza was, 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 and it, there was an issue with, with renting space out in that plaza and I don't have the minutes in front of me, but at the time, I think the answer to that question was that that plaza was almost a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent occupied and rented. So, the question was asked if they expanded that plaza and used it for what, for what is, the code permitted, that why wouldn't they be able to rent the property and expand that plaza and use it and, and continue the, the use the way it was intended to be used instead of asking for a use permit?
Well, you know, I kind of remember that and I'll tell you, when I appeared before you the last time, I was a lawyer in private practice representing Mark IV. Today, I'm in-house counsel for Mark IV and I can tell you it's not a hundred percent occupied, it's nowhere near a hundred percent occupied and it wasn't a year and a half ago when I appeared here. If I said that, I was absolutely mistaken. Much of the upper floors are not, are not filled without getting into too much detail. Expanding it is, is just not a feasible alternative as a result of construction costs and we, we won't be able to rent it out. In terms of proving financial hardship, we've submitted the, the actual financial proof based on what we allocated towards site purchase costs, site construction costs and expenses, taxes, insurance, overhead that we've paid for that property on, since two thousand four, as well as an affidavit from a professional with nineteen years of experience who says, nobody wants to lease that site for one of the permitted uses in the zoning district. She's tried. She's done everything that a commercial real estate broker can do and has been unsuccessful. And that is exactly what use variances are designed for.
Don, how's Eric here? And, and I think Corinne and Barry were on the board at the time. Didn't we at one point grant a use variance for one of the upper offices because they were having trouble renting out the upper floor space?
I don't believe.
I don't recall.
I'm not recalling that at all.
Okay. I, I, I think the last time you came in, when, when Royal Car Wash came in, they came in with complete plans. They, they had proved that they had stacking area for cars, so on and so forth. There are real estate people came in with potential deals they had that never materialized. I guess what, what we were disappointed in was the lack of plans last time to show what was really going to go there.
So, and that's exactly why we've prepared an actual site plan that shows the exact stacking capabilities. And this is something that the planning board has, has really hammered out with us. This is, this meets the requirements of a professionally prepared site plan. If you wanted a specific detail, I may be able to give you answers. Now, what other kind of plan I could provide?
Yeah, I, I think, now, Corinne and Don could probably correct me if I'm wrong here, but, because they, I know they were on the board at the time. I thought one of the plans, we had, we had just a rough sketch without dimensions and so on and so forth.
Yes.
And it looked as if it needed multiple area variances as well to build the car wash.
And I remember talking to you about that at that point and I said, I don't think we're going to need any, but I couldn't tell you exactly because what I submitted at the beginning was a sketch plan. This is an actual site plan, I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty, zero area variances, none. Absolutely no area variances will be required.
Okay. And I think, I think that somewhat impacted our, our thoughts.
I think I recall that.
It's like, it was like trying to put two pounds in a one pound package to open a use variance for that site.
Yes.
Because then, then multiple area variances would just further, you know, make, make it less desirable from our perspective as a zoning board.
Yes.
Corinne, do you, you recall any, any other details of that application? The prior application?
I, I recall that when we, when this application was before the board in December of eighteen, that was exactly our concern. We didn't have this level of detail. We had a rough sketch that there'd be some vacuum stations and some self-car wash bays and, and essentially just trust us every time. So, with that level of detail, lack of level of detail, the board was uncomfortable granting any type of a use variance. This has certainly given more detail. I read through the minutes of the multiple times you've been before the planning board and, you know, the, the plan has certainly been refined several times. The, the traffic has been taken into consideration. The fact that you're looping the exit traffic out behind the, the plaza building answers a lot of the questions that the planning board had as well. The plan wise, this, this is, you know, certainly left up, left out much more so that, you know, we're looking at a plan that's valid and, and appears on value to not even require any area variances. You know, whether or not it meets the, the standards of the use variance, you know, is up, up to the board. Are we satisfied with the, with the information as far as the financials and the, the lack of any other interested party and such? It's, it's easier for us to, to give consideration at this point. You do get available plan now in front of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think to, to expand on what, what Corinne just said, we, we were reluctant to grant the use variance if the car wash was too much for that site. And we couldn't tell from the plans because then, you know, then you're coming back, then the planning board has a problem.
Absolutely.
Because they have to stack. In other words, we want to hand the planning board something they can't deal with, so.
I don't love admitting when I'm wrong, but I was probably wrong then to say, no, just do it now. It's, we've had a great process with the planning board, really hammered out some of the details. I think it's a better design now, too.
Now, maybe, do we actually have an affidavit from the marketing people stating that the market?
Yes.
Do you have an hand?
Exhibit C is Susan Woods.
I was just looking for it in my package here.
It's the, in the package.
Barry, I know, but I do not have an affidavit from Susan Woods or Jim Richards as far as the economics of it. Furthermore, I believe Mark IV owned the property back in nineteen ninety, nineteen night, uh, eighties. So, I'd like to make sure that that figure is, that, you know, that their purchase price of that is reflected in their cost analysis of this property. I understand that they sell it from one corporation to the other, but I certainly would like to have the whole history on that. Thank you.
Good, good point, Don.
If anyone just addressed that briefly, and I, and I can get you that, I don't honestly know who owned it, but when we do transfer properties internally, we have to at least book somewhat close to fair market value for it for tax purposes. Otherwise, it's a gift and you're taxing yourself differently. Either way, it, I'm sure it's a little bit less than fair market value, but that goes in our favor towards financial hardship because we actually paid less for it than what it, what we could have paid and we're still not able to make a financial, reasonable financial return. But Don, I can absolutely get you some, some more detail.
I don't think we specifically have a problem with the car wash at this point, but to Don's points, it's an excellent point because we really wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't see that, that data as a board.
Absolutely. And you know what? If I, if we had known this was coming, I probably would have.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have that, I, I do have those affidavits. This is the town attorney. And I do have the, I do have the financial breakdown. I don't know if the board has that, but there's certainly a number of questions I'd like to ask about the, the operating expenses so that I can kind of make heads of sales out of this, this financial statement.
I don't believe we have the detail that you have, John. I'm just looking for the packet I have here.
I think it's exhibit D.
Yeah, this is, the use variance is more a money issue than it is.
Absolutely.
You know, how far is from the property line issue, so I think we really need some, we need some more data. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're opposed to it, but I think the members of the board would like to see this data so that we have something concrete to base our decision on.
So, the data provided in this case, I'm going to request that we continue this, obviously. But the data provided is literally all of our operating expenses, income and, and income and expense statements. It's the only financial data we, it's all of the financial data.
All right, well, the more you can give us for us to make the decision, the better.
Don, would you say it would be helpful if I had a finance person here next time to ask questions?
Well.
I think Godwin that lives in Webster.
I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell whether he said Don or John or someone. You know, I, I think the, the documents that I received, you know, just before seven o'clock from you at my request, I think they're pretty straightforward, but, you know, there's going to be some questions that are going to be asked for information behind the numbers and, you know, if you're prepared to answer those, I don't, I don't think you need an in-house accountant, but as long as you can handle the numbers. I just can't fill one answer, for example. You know, you've got land improvements in two thousand four of about a hundred and eighty thousand and the top of the document reflects that its costs incurred for only these two point three acres, which is a lot in question. And one, one question would be, you know, the, the, the document is obviously attempting to show that, you know, you're losing your shirt on this property, but I'm assuming that the hundred and eighty thousand in improvements likely were not just for that lot, but perhaps spread across the plans of development, which I think you said within, there about two thousand four. I'm not certain of that, but those are some of the numbers that I think the board probably has questions about. If, if you go through it, you can answer all those. I, I don't know if we need more than you, but you need to obviously have all the backup knowledge, not necessarily documentation, but backup knowledge on these numbers.
I'm bringing somebody. But just to address that question, John, because I remember asking it two years ago, that hundred and eighty thousand dollars and then the next year, there's another similarly high number, that's what was allocated.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, that, that's what was allocated to this parcel. The actual stormwater improvements cost like eight hundred thousand and then, and then the site improvement costs, cost, you know, I don't know, four hundred thousand. So, that's actually that parcel's percentage, but I just happen to know that off the top of my head, but I'll get, I'll get educated on this and, and be able to give you the data.
Because, because that lot is just sitting there without anything on it but dirt or, or loose stone, they, they might want to know what you guys spent a quarter of a million on that for, just for that lot.
Giant pond, but, but yes, I will give you specific details.
Okay.
Yeah, frankly.
There's a plethora of case law, as you know, on this issue and what trial courts and appellate courts are looking for in terms of making that hardship case and the uniqueness of it. I'm not suggesting the board's going to turn it down, but just so the record, you know, totally intact, you know, I think that would be a compelling part of the case, so, so give us some more time to give your duck and roll.
Great. Just so nobody leaves here thinking that those aren't the exact, actual numbers, those aren't numbers we came up with in October two thousand eighteen. Those were numbers we pulled off our computer system that were actually entered into a computer system in two thousand four as expenses. That was just a printout. Nobody put those numbers together for me. That's just what the numbers are, but I'll get you details about them.
Would you, did you want to add anything or would you care to table till?
I would request to table this to, what, June? Is that, or you have another May?
Yeah, we got one more, man. Technically, the twenty-sixth is not a meeting date because it falls after Memorial Day.
Okay.
So, first, the ninth would be the next one.
The ninth?
Yeah, June ninth.
So, you request table June ninth?
Yes, please. Thank you all very much.
If we did that data at least a week ahead of time.
Absolutely.
Time, time to study it a little bit?
Absolutely.
At least a week, even, even today. You had something, is that you, John?
Yeah, Mr. Nadler, you know, I, I suppose it might be, and I don't know if the board has the affidavit of Susan Woods. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but, you know, there's probably efforts and opinions and a sense of the market in between the lines of this affidavit and, and the level of difficulty, you know, may be easier appreciated if she was there. That's just my opinion.
That's a great idea and I can tell you she will be here. Both she and our chief financial officer live in Webster and every time I have a meeting, I invite them and they say, no, wait, but they will be here and they will be thrilled to see you all.
Maybe, maybe by June ninth, we'll be able to have more people in the boardroom. The situation changes by the day, so, you know, that might be to our advantage if, if more.
Absolutely. I'm bringing them.
All right. So, the applicant.
We can go out for a drink afterwards.
Applicant has requested to table until the June ninth meeting, but.
Seven. Absolutely. I'm bringing them.
All right. So the applicant.
We can go out for a drink afterwards.
Applicant has requested to table until the June ninth meeting, but.
Seven.
Okay. So, let's, Don. Don, the applicant.
Do you want to do it in the first two weeks? I had it on mute. Uh, yeah, I.
Okay, yeah, Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And Barry says aye. So we'll see you then, and we'll look forward to seeing your paperwork ahead of that, ahead of that data.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.